Going to screen share my PowerPoint. Okay, do you all see the PowerPoint?
Yep, I can see it.
Good. Okay, if anybody has any questions during the stuff like if you want more details on a certain topic, I'd be happy to answer them. If we have time, if my computer actually allow it, I'd like to maybe go over some of the GNS stuff. I don't know if we'll have time for that. But how do you all feel on GNS? Like, um, do you feel good with the command guys? Like if you're asked to, um, like, like in the test, if you had the lab and GNS, do you feel confident that you could do it with the command guides?
Maybe.
Okay, well, anyway, I will tell you that, well, we'll discuss that in a minute. The GNS won't be too horrible, I don't think. This is just be one test, but let's go over what's on the test now. So this is exam one review for CIT two forty seven. So here's the overview for the test. So your first test in this class will have two parts, a traditional Canvas exam and a hands-on GNS lab. The exam is structured in this manner. You have sixty minutes and a total of thirty questions. The vast majority of the questions will be multi-choice. However, one question will be a vocabulary mix and match question. If you remember, I think it was like test one or quiz one or two that you had the mix and match. I will give you a hint. It's the same mix and match. Be sure to study that pretty closely. Um, also, you'll be given original, a short answer question. I will give you a little hint of what it's about. Basically, you'll need to, you'll be given this scenario and you'll be asked how to configure, basically how to configure some settings on a multi-switch network. You can eat, you can either type in the CLI commands, or you can write out the CLI commands you would use, or you can explain what you would do, like the process you would go through. I believe, uh, last time I checked, both were acceptable. And, um, as I said, yes, this is a closed book exam and lockdown browser is required. Um, the GNS lab, you will have one, it'll be structured in this manner.
Is it gonna require a, uh?
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, I, I was just saying, are we gonna have to, uh, like have a camera for this?
I think so. I, I believe so. Um, if you need a new laptop or you don't have something, or if you need a laptop that has a camera and stuff, you can borrow one from the NQ tech bar, I believe. Uh, if you don't, if you're not ready to take the test, like for, um, time or, um, don't have a right computer for it, um, I believe Rana will give you an extension. But anyway, yes, you will need to be recorded and, um, do you need a camera on for the lock, the lockdown browser exam? So, um, for the GNS lab, there's no instruction sheet in Canvas. All the required steps are listening topology. Actually, once the thing opens, you'll be able to see what you need to do, but I'll be listening at here. So basically, it's a kind of a repeat of some of the other stuff you've done, like it'll be a combination between what you've done in lab two and lab three. So you'll be setting up trunks, V LANs and banners and stuff like that. If you use the command guide I gave you and, um, probably practice some of those labs again, you should be just fine. It should be really easy. The good news about the GNS lab is it's open book. And again, I highly recommend you use the command guides. It's actually one of the big reasons I made them is for easy review for the exams. Let's go on to the next slide now. So let's go over some topics we'll be going. Oh, did I break up?
Yeah, for, for a moment there.
Um, if I break up, guys, um, please let me know because I am recording and I want to make sure everybody hears everything. If you hear me break up, um, just let me know, I won't mind. But anyway, let's go over some of the topics that are being covered in the exam. So for the question-based exam, you'll be tested on network topology or network terminology. That's the vocabulary, um, question I was talking about. There will be a number of art process questions. So basically those diagrams with the, um, you know, those questions with the diagram of four switches or one switch and four computers. You need to tell which, um, or which, um, ports and MAC addresses the switch learns. You'll be seeing a lot of those in the exam, so I would review those in the quizzes. Um, also, you'll need, you'll be testing on collision and broadcast domains. You'll be tested on some hardware facts concerning hubs, switches and routers. Or basically, it's facts in general, not necessarily hardware. But the basic facts about switches, routers and hubs. Um, you'll need to understand a lot about the switch CLI commands. So basically, you, certain questions will give you a list of terminal, terminal commands. Typed in a switch, you'll need to be able to interpret what was configured based on, um, those pictures. Also, you'll be tested on V LANs and trunking. And finally, some switch troubleshooting concepts such as port security and some soak, and then some show commands. And then there's the GNS lab. Well, basically, it just covers setting up an enable password and banner. Switch IP addresses on V LAN one interface and then telnet settings. And finally, the V LAN and trunks, V LANs and trunks, um, for the telnet sending, I believe you need to know how to set up a username and password. But my command guides basically have all of this information you need. So I highly recommend using them in the exam. So here's some tips to prepare for the exam. So for the question-based exam, I recommend going through all the quizzes from modules one to four and studying them. Um, just, uh, just to let you know, you probably noticed in the last slide, but subnetting is not covered in this exam. Like all the new subnetting stuff you've just learned, um, it won't be covered in the exam, so you won't need to worry about it. By the way, I wanted to ask you, how, how are you all do, how are you all doing with subnetting so far?
I am learning it all today personally. Like after this, I'm going to be taking my quizzes on that. So it's good.
Oh, good. So, um, I did want to give a little tip. I do the video. There is a video in the no quest or the no credit something practice section. There's also a PowerPoint. Those give you shortcuts in learning how to subnet. Basically, they give you the, but they, instead of, um, going with the binary method, method, they give what, they teach what's known as the magic number method. That makes subnetting a lot easier. It makes it a lot quicker too. So it'll help you with all your quizzes and exams and stuff. But concerning test one, you don't need to worry about subnetting. It's just, just review the quizzes from modules one to four and study them. Another recommendation I have, if you bought the physical version of your textbook, you should, maybe even the, the digital one, but there should be some testing software included with your CCNA package. Basically, that gives, there should be like a CD or two. They basically, basically contain practice questions to help you prepare for the exam, but they can also help you really learn the concepts in this course. I used them all throughout the semester when I took this class and they really helped out. If you have access to that CD, I highly recommend you use it to prepare for the exam and all the exams in general, even the quizzes too. Really good for that. But in addition to that, I would highly recommend you go through the cap canvas PowerPoints. And if you have the time, the lectures, you don't need to sit through all of Cunningham's lectures, but some of the PowerPoints and some of his lectures will contain points that you'll need to understand. Um, I particularly recommend his PowerPoint on like port security and stuff. And troubleshooting, I highly recommend that, that PowerPoint, because I didn't really cover a lot of the stuff he did in my master TA lecture. So you want to go through, um, Cunningham's lecture on that. So finally, this PowerPoint, you should use it to narrow down key top aspects of the exam and use it to identify any topics you're struggling with. I will note, I haven't covered everything that's on the exam in this PowerPoint because I'm really not allowed to, but I did cover a lot. So, um, you want to go through Canvas, scour the PowerPoints. I highly recommend you do that. And then, um, watch some of the lectures to get a better idea of some topics. But this PowerPoint here will provide an easy review for what you'll be tested on. It does contain pretty detailed information, but it doesn't contain everything. So to prepare for the GNS portion, I recommend you read through the instructions carefully when you take it. Make sure you complete every single one. Use the command guys to help you finish the tasks. You can also use them beforehand to review, um, the commands you need to do certain tasks by setting up banners and stuff. Um, also, a recommendation for preparing for the GNS portion. A good idea would be to go through all the labs you did, like lab two and three in particular, and re, redo them, like set everything up and make sure you can do that and everything works. If you could do it there, you could do it in the exam. So, um, I underline and boldface this because this is incredibly important. Please do not forget to type in copy our U S T. In other words, don't forget to save before submitting your work. To make sure your work is complete, I recommend re-downloading your lab and testing your configurations to make sure everything works. Um, I have noticed in the past, certain students have uploaded incomplete exam labs. I recommend you download it and make sure everything is good before you leave. You can resubmit if something is wrong. You, I believe you can resubmit the lab. So you can do as many resubmissioned attempts as you need to get everything right. But, um, let me think, there was one thing I wanted to mention, um. Make sure you submit the thing correctly. Um, I've noticed, I've noted this in a previous canvas, canvas announcement. But some students, it's decreased significantly, but there are certain students who just upload the little GNS file like it's the little Gecko icon. Please don't upload that alone. You need to compress the parent folder that Gecko icon is located in. Because if you don't do that, you don't, your configurations won't be submitted alongside the lab itself. And then all I, all I'll see is the topology and there won't be any commands configured. So please make sure you upload the parent folder along, that contains the, your GNS lab file. So, um, let's get started on some of the topics you'll be going through in the exam. Um, you'll need, this is incredibly important for a lot of the questions in the exam. So you need to learn how MAC addresses are, well, learned in the, um, switches. So as I said, there will be those diagrams with four computers. They each have a MAC address and then there's a switch. You'll need to know how a switch learns. It learns MAC addresses because this is basically the answers to those questions. Basically, you'll need to, um, note what changed in the MAC switches MAC address table based on the frames the switch sent out. So this is how a switch learns MAC addresses. So for first, it receives a frame on one of its ports. The switch retrieves the source MAC address from the Ethernet header of the frame. We switched then searches that MAC address table for that MAC address. If that MAC address is not found, it then adds it to it alongside the port it came from. So basically, say there's four computers in a network with one switch. If PCA sends a, a frame to PCD, the switch will learn PCA's frame or it learned PCA's MAC address in the port that the MAC address is associated with. So that's how you will answer those questions in the, in the exam. Another important thing to learn about is forwarding, how frames are forwarded in the network. So first, a switch receives a frame on one of its ports. It extracts the, extracts the destination MAC address from the Ethernet header. Hmm, sorry, it looks like I broke up. So let me start that over. So forwarding frames. A switch receives a frame on one of its ports. The switch extracts the destination MAC address from the Ethernet header. It looks up the destination MAC address in the table. If it identifies the MAC address in the table, it forwards the frame to the port specified in the table unless that port is the same port and what's the frame is received. In other words, if a compute, a switch is not going to send a frame back to a source computer, basically. However, if no entry exists in the table for the MAC address, the switch basically broadcasts it to every device in the network except the source device. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Nothing here.
I had one quick question. It's, it's not based on the, um, the information on the slides. Um, or is the, uh, the GNS portion, is that separate to the, the exam portion? Like, or like, do we do the, the lab separately, like in our own browser then?
Good question. So basically, what you'll do is you'll even, I would recommend taking the exam first. Um, depending on when it opened. So basically, the GNS might open earlier. So there are separate assignments. So you'll have the test on one page, the Canvas page, and then you have the GNS thing on another page. I will say for preparation, in the future, when you go to CIT four forty seven now, you will actually take the GNS at the same time as your quiz, like the exams, but there is no lockdown browser. So yeah, lockdown browser is used in this class. Thankfully, it's not in four forty seven, which is a little ironic. But I will say Roth is a great teacher. You'll love four forty seven. It's easier than this class, especially if you do well in this class. But anyway, let's talk about some networking devices. So the first one is hubs. So basically, a hub and a diagram is represented by two arrows in one line. So, and then, let's talk about quote unquote advantages of hubs, at least over ten base two buses. So problems on one cable don't impact the entire network. So basically, the way networks used to be configured, there was basically, I believe there's this one big cable. It was a bus, I believe. It was called a ten base two bus. So if a problem happened on that cable, the entire network went down. Hubs don't have that problem. A problem on one cable and a hub won't affect everything else on the network. Also, hubs allow for you to easily create or create a star topology. However, hubs have many problems. Basically, the, the hub is entire collision domain. Basically, it makes collisions very likely to happen. Also, shared bandwidth, only one device can send data at a time on a hub. And hubs have very poor security because their broadcasters seen by our hosts. So basically, and that also, um, decreases bandwidth performance. So, um, there's an old saying, hubs are evil, and they really are. They cause a lot of problems. They're incredibly outdated. You never want to use one. At least not in a production network. There's also bridges. You won't be quizzed too much on them in the exam, if at all. But, um, it's important just to remember this, bridges reduce collision domains and add bandwidth. So basically, each port on a bridge is a collision domain. So they're not a big topic on the exam, but just remember this fact here. They look like this little curve. This little curve thing, like a little square that almost looked like it had a bite taken out of it. So basically, it's a little moon shaped thing here. And it just, um, reduces collision domains. I believe a bridge only has two ports as well. Um, now we'll talk about switches, very important topic for this exam. So a switch works like a collection of bridges. Each port is its own collision domain. A switch typically has a whole bunch of ports, like in your GNS exams, they have sixteen ports. So if one device connected to, when did I, let me see. If only one device can, is connected to a port, the switch can communicate at full duplex. So basically, if one device is connected on one port, then the full, then the switch can run a full duplex. I don't believe duplex is cut. At least the way I saw duplex wasn't really covered on the exam, like speed duplex. You won't need to worry about that. But just in case Rana changes it, I recommend reviewing one of the PowerPoints in module two. But it shouldn't be a big deal in this exam. So, um, let's talk about collision broadcast domain. So there's a very big difference between these two. You need to understand. So a collision domain is the set of devices whose frames can collide with one another. So bridges, switches and routers, this is incredibly important. So bridges, switches and routers separate the network into multiple, let me put that there, multiple collision domains. So if you see this diagram here, each circle is a collision domain. So you see the hub, all the ports in the hub are one collision domain. The bridge separates network into multiple collision domains. And then you see a router here. That's also, there's also a collision domain between the router and the switch. And then each port on the switch is its own collision domain. This contrasts with broadcast domains. So a broadcast domain is the set of devices for which, when one device sends a broadcast, all devices receive that broadcast, except for the source device that sent that broadcast, of course. So routers separate the network into broadcast domains. V LANs also create multiple broadcast domains on switches. So that's a very important point to remember. So a V LAN basically is a broadcast domain. Also, the term LAN equates to broadcast domain as well. So routers basically separate networks into multiple LANs and therefore also separate them into multiple broadcast domains. A switch, however, represents one broadcast domain, with the exception of using V LANs. Are there any questions so far?
Nope, not here.
Okay, let's move on. Oops. Let me see here. Okay. So this is a very important table for this exam. You're gonna be asked multiple questions about different features that are a part of hubs, switches and routers. So say you're given the question of greater, which device provides greater cabling distances? Hubs, switches and routers are all answers to that question. Multiple collision domains, you need to remember that hubs do not have multiple collision domains, but switches and routers do. Increased bandwidth, switches and routers do that, but hubs do not. So basically hubs or switches and routers increase bandwidth by creating multiple collision domains, basically. Multiple broadcast domains, however, router, the router is the only answer. This question does not consider V LANs on switches. So basically, if you receive a question that asks, um, which devices create multiple broadcast domains? The router is the only answer. Do not answer switch. This question is not considering V LANs. So, um, here's a example of some terminology you'll need to define in your, um, vocabulary question. So you need to understand the different memory, switch memory types. So there's RAM, for example, it's working storage. It includes the active running configure, it can, it basically includes the running configuration file on a switch. This memory is also volatile. ROM stores the boot program that finds a Cisco iOS image and those into RAM. Flash basically stores the iOS image. So you need to understand the difference between ROM and Flash. Flash actually is the iOS image. ROM simply loads it into memory or RAM. Then there's NVRAM, which stores up the startup configuration file that is used when the switch is booted. So make sure you understand the different, the differences between these four types of memory. And you should be pretty good on the, um, vocabulary question. There's some other terms you'll need to know, um. But just to review that question in the quiz and you should be good. So here's an example, Swiss, Swiss Cisco CLI sess- session. So basically, you'll receive multiple questions in the exam that are like this. So you'll have, um, a terminal here and you'll have a bunch of commands typed into it. You'll need to examine those, those commands and answer some questions based on them. So I'm actually going to ask for some volunteer, volunteers here. So I want you all to take a moment to examine these commands. And then I want you to answer question one. So what is the password used to log in in enable mode? So take a look at these, um, commands here and tell me what the enable password will be. Yes, sir. Yes, Evan?
Is it, is it Cisco?
Close. So, um, one important point to keep in mind is that the enable secret password overrides the enabled passwords.
Okay, you're right.
So let me in would be the correct answer here. So the password to log into the console, um, anybody want to answer that? Yes?
Is it a spam?
Let me take a look here, um. It looks like it. Yeah, I'd say so. So, um, yeah, line consoles, here's the tip. So line console zero is the password here. So when you type line console zero and you see password, that is the console login. Now, the telnet, now the telnet password is actually the same word. But here's the difference between the two. So line console zero is to, is the password you use to log into a console. Like if you were to use a, um, a special cable to plug into the switch as a console cable, I believe, and then you, um, log in from your computer. You, for those of you who are in the first section of this class, you've probably already done that before in your labs or your, um, in-person labs. Now for telnet, it's line V T Y. So V T Y refers to the telnet slash S S H ports for configure or connecting the switches that way. So basically, that is how, um, or that, that is how you identify the telnet password. So V T Y is for telnet, console is for console login. So the message that is displayed when the lot, when you log in, you just find MOTD and then, um, the whatever sentence, that's how you find the banner message. So this is important. How many telnet connections are configured? Um, your account starts from zero and it goes to the last number. So this, I believe, would be sixteen. So this is sixteen telnet configuration or connections. That's a very important fact to keep in mind for the exam. You might want to review the PowerPoints just to get an idea for this, like Cunningham's PowerPoints and Ronus. But the count starts from zero and goes to the last number here. So, uh, I'm gonna give you all this last question here. What is the password for, uh, what is the password after reboot? If because this configuration, if all these configurations were all that was entered and the switch was rebooted, um, what would be the enable password? So I'll give you a hint. There's a certain command missing from this, um, session here.
Is it? Um, I, I'm, I'm looking at password spam because that one follows line V T Y zero fifteen.
Um, the actual answer, well, that is a password configured, but there is a big problem with this session. So basically, the user didn't save. And the switch was rebooted.
Oh.
Nothing would be configured. There's no password. So all these commands were for not.
Okay, it makes sense. Um, so if they had saved at the end there, then what would it have been?
So basically, the wording is a little vague here. So what is the password after reboot? I believe it's referring to the enable password. It probably let me in. I think the example have a more clear password or clear question, but basically, um, yeah, basically, nothing would be, there would be no password. So that is a trick question you might see in the exam. Yes, Cunningham put a trick question. Oh, boy. But yeah, um, I will say, uh, this PowerPoint was actually initially designed by the former TA of this class. He's graciously allowed me to reuse his work. I've added some stuff to it and changed the design of the, um, PowerPoint. And that's why, one of the major reasons why we were so late is that I had to get all this together today. Um, and I wanted to improve a lot of the stuff and add stuff to it. Yeah, I apologize again for the delay, but I hope it's been worth it so far.
Yes, definitely has.
Okay, that's good. So, um, here's something new I added. Here's an example, switch command examples. Um, here's some show commands that you'll need to keep in mind. Now, I've actually, these show commands will very likely be relevant to the questions you'll receive in the exam. Please very, please pay very close attention to these. So, uh, let's first examine show V LAN and show V LAN brief. So show V LAN brief is only gonna show like the first half of this table, like the first table here. It's gonna show the V LAN name, status and ports. So show V LAN is useful when, is useful for seeing which ports are associated with which V LAN and whether a V LAN is disabled. Excuse me. So if you're looking for a disabled V LAN, show V LAN or show V LAN brief, those are the commands you want to use. Then we should, then we have show MAC address table. So this table, it basically just shows the current MAC address, port pairs, the switches learned. Um, there are certain arguments you can add to this command, like dynamic. So that basically, so the command itself basically shows all MAC addresses configured. If you want to see which ones were dynamically learned by the switch, then you type the term, you type the argument dynamic after show MAC address table. So here's a more commands. So show interface switchport. This is an important command. It's got a bunch of information, but basically it displays important facts about switchports. These facts include the name, whether a port is a trunk, its status in general. So basically, you can find out whether a switch is a trunk by the administrative and operational mode. Um, that's a little hint for a question that you That's a little hint for a question in the exam, but. It basically includes a bunch of different information about the trunk. Another, however, there is another command that can show you trunking information. So show in trunk. This is a very important topic here. So show interface switch port, show interface trunk. Those two commands are used to display trunking information. So showing trunk specifically shows encapsulation modes, native VLANs and et cetera. So here's some other commands. So show interface description. Basically, it, all it does is display the line protocol status of each switch. So. There's one status here and then there's a protocol status. Cunningham's PowerPoints will do detail what these two terms mean. Unfortunately, I don't know them off the top of my head, but I don't, they're not that important for the exam. But knowing the, I will say something I did forget to add to this PowerPoint unfortunately due to time. Was the line protocol statuses and what they mean. You need to make sure you understand that. I'll probably add that after this session and this PowerPoint will be available on Canvas for all of you to review, but. Yeah. Please make sure you understand the difference or the different line status protocols. So show interface status also shows the status of the compare, the status of a port, but it also shows the VLAN as a part of. The duplex and speed and the type for each port. Let's shift focus to VLANs now. So here's some facts about LANs, VLAN. So a LAN consists of all hosts in a single broadcast domain. So basically, this is something some of you have been, have been kind of getting wrong and some of the lads, I haven't. Taken away any points for it, but a LAN basically can cover both, multiple switches. So basically if multiple switches are connected to one another, that's actually a LAN. That's one broadcast thing. When the switches are connected to each other, they don't, switches don't create multiple broadcast domains. So therefore, multiple switches connected together that are not separated by VLANs or routers, that's one entire broadcast domain. A VLAN, however, is basically a virtual LAN. It's its own broadcast domain. So without VLANs, all ports on the switch belong to the same VLAN. Or the same LAN, but with VLANs configured, a switch can support multiple, for one broadcast domain. Per VLAN or basically one LAN or one VLAN per port. So you can have one broadcast domain for, for each port on the VLAN. And also VLANs can span multiple ports on a switch. Does anybody have any questions so far? I'll take that as a no. Does anybody hear me? I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. That's good. So let's move on to subnet to VLAN. This is an important topic. So hosts on a single VLAN must be in the same IP subnet. In other words, similar to how all devices on one switch. Need to be a part of the same subnet. Hosts on a single VLAN need to be a part of a same subnet. Now that you understand subnets, this probably makes a lot more sense now. So hosts on different VLANs must be on different IP subnets. So it's kind of like when you're working with routers. So each port on a router needs to be in its own subnet. The same is true for VLANs. Different VLANs need to have different subsets. So for hosts on two different VLANs to communicate, a router is needed even if the hosts are plugged into the same switch. See, multi-layered switches also work as well. So basically, two different subnets, whether they're between routers or, or between switches or VLANs. Cannot communicate unless there was a router between them, or you have a multi-layered switch, which basically functions as a switch and a router. So here's an important point. VLANs can span multiple switches. So here's a diagram here. You have switch one, switch two. And you have VLAN one and VLAN two between different. Between, or you have VLAN one, VLAN two spanning the two switches. So a LAN spans multiple connected switches unless there is a router between switches. So a VLAN needs extra data to span switches. So there's VLAN ID, VLAN ID. So basically that's the VLAN number like two or three. Frames are tagged with a header containing the VLAN ID so that recipient switches know which VLAN frame. Which, which frame or VLAN a frame belongs to. So an important point here is the native VLAN. It's not tagged. That's an important point. So multi-switch VLANs require VLAN trunking. So basically with trunking. As you see in this diagram, a computer sends out a frame that belongs to a certain VLAN. The switch config or adds the VLAN, VLAN ID to that frame. The trunk, the frame goes to the trunk, the other switch receives the frame, it checks the VLAN ID. And then that frame goes to the proper VLAN and then the proper device. So let's talk about native VLANs a little bit. So eight oh two that one queue, the protocol, the trunking protocol supports one native VLAN for trunk. So native VLAN is VLAN one by default. The native VLAN frames are not tagged. And native VLAN, this native VLAN concept helps report switches that do not understand VLAN tagging. Here is a table here, bring, so this is trunking. So basically this table shows. Different settings you can put on trunking ports and this will determine whether or not they, they're trunking. So basically in the red, the red, the red represents access ports or basically both ports would be access. Or basically one port would be access mode. So basically, for example. Let me, let me rephrase this. So basically the red and green squares represent the operational mode. The admin, the gray squares represent the admin mode. So basically, as you recall, admin mode is the commands you type in your switch. And then X, operational mode is basically what the switch is actually doing. So. If you type access and access, so basically if two ports are access mode, the, they will operationally act like an access port. But if you have a trunking cable and dynamic desirable, those two ports, you actually end up with operational mode of trunking between the two ports. You can study this diagram in your own time. Black and white here refers to basically some ser, a serious problem. Basically, the ports won't work whatsoever. That basically refers to an error. Which we won't encounter in this class. Basically, that's something keep in mind. Basically, you'll be asked about. You'll be given a question where there's, you have a port that's dynamic auto and dynamic desirable, for example, oops. And you'll need to answer the, you need to answer by saying what the operational mode is going to be, whether, or in other words, whether the. Ports are going to act like a trunk or I can access port. So here's a medicinal facts on VLANs and trunks. So VLANs confirm access interface, you know, assignment. Let me see this. Oh, this is basically troubleshooting. Oh, this is troubleshooting. So when you're troubleshooting VLANs. You need to confirm the access interface being an assignment. In other words, check the ports that are assigned to the VLANs. Make sure the correct ports are assigned. Need to confirm the VLAN existence and status. You need to check, make sure it's not disabled. And here's some helpful troubleshooting commands. This will be important for the exam. So show VLAN brief, show interface status and show MAC address table. Those are all helpful. Helpful commands for troubleshooting VLANs. Trunks, you want to check for mismatched trunking operational states. So basically if the admin modes are wrong or not, or if the admin modes are sent away that prevents trunking, then you get an operational access mode. Check for mismatch encapsulation. You need to make sure that eight oh two, eight oh two dot one queue is always configured. Check aloud VLAN lists, check for mismatched native VLANs. And these are, this is very important here. The helpful troubleshooting commands include show interface trunk and show interface and switchboard. Okay, so analyzing switch interface status and statistics for troubleshooting. Here's some useful commands for that. So the show interface description, it'll show you the line of protocol status. So interface status shows the interface status codes. And then show the interface type numb. It helps you look out for interface or speed duplex issues and interface statistics. Oh, I did include it. That's good. So I did actually include the interface status code. That's good. So before we continue, is there any questions so far?
I got nothing.
Okay, have I been making sense so far?
Yes, definitely.
That's good. So this table basically contains all of the, the status protocols you need to know. There's three types of statuses. So there's line status and protocol status. Basically, you'll see these together. On that one command, it's show interface status. You know, it's actually show interface description. So when you type show interface description, you'll see these two together. So you'll need to interpret what these mean, these two commands mean together. So. When you see admin down and then down, it means the shutdown command has been used on the port and it can't do anything. Basically, no traffic is going to come through. When you see down and down, that means there's a physical issue, like there's no cable. There's a bad or wrong cable or the other end on, or the other switch is down. So line status up and the protocol status down, we, you'll never see that. We don't expect that. At least not on switches anyway. So down and down. When you see line protocol status of down and down, error disabled, note this, this message. So error disabled. It means support security has been, has disabled the interface. So basically there's been a port security breach and. Report security settings on the switch have disabled that port for security reasons. So finally, it's up and up. That's basically means the interface is perfectly fine and working. Now there's interface status commands. You'll basically see that when you type show interface status. So you need to memorize these as well. So the first one is disabled. It's the same thing as admin down, down. Means the shutdown command has been used. Not connect means. There is a physical issue like with the cable, either it's, there's no cable or it's down. Error disabled refers to port security and connect means the interface is working. So just make sure to memorize this table before you take the exam. So a little port security review. We'll go over some of these topics. So. I, I did forget to, due to time, I did forget to add some more slides for this stuff. Port security mostly is going to deal with like. For concerning the exam, you're mostly going to be concerned with recovering from error disabled in the port statuses basically. Or port settings. So analyzing port security operations on the interface. So to do that, you type, show port security. You can show, you could type in show interface status to see if a violation occurred. That would be the air disabled status. So to get details, you can do show port security and then type the interface name. It'll show port status, violation mode. Last source address and security violation count. So it's more difficult to diagnose port security violations when you use the protect or restrict statuses. Now, you probably noticed in this class, but port security isn't used much. It is tested on a little bit, but there isn't a whole lot. That's talked about. You're not configuring in this class. This is very important here. The port security violation actions. So there's three basic settings you can set for port security. There's protect, restrict and shutdown. Shutdown is the default. So basically these settings, these settings represents an ever-increasing amount of strictness. So basically when a violation occurs with a protect, which protect option, all that happens is the offending traffic is discarded. With restrict. So basically the switch will send a log message to your computer and the network that gathers those. And then it increments a violation counter. So that's for protect and restrict. Note that restrict also discards the offending traffic. Finally, shutdown, not only discard the offending traffic, but sends out a message and increases the violation counter. It completely disables the interface. So only shutdown will disable the interface and keep it from doing anything. The other two basically just send messages and discard the traffic. So shutdown is by default. And please make sure to remember that restrict and shutdown also do the same thing that protect us. And shutdown does the same thing that restrict us. Finally, recovering from error disabled status. So to manually recover it from it, you can go to the interface and. Global configuration mode, type the shutdown and then no shutdown commands. But if violation recur, reoccurs, it will go back to, it'll go back to that state, the error disabled state. However, there is an automatic recovery mode. It can be configured to, you can configure a switch to automatically reconfigure as a port. By using a specific command. Can you see, you can also set some causes too. So that's pretty much the end of the PowerPoint presentation and the study session. Any questions so far? Is there any questions about, any questions in general about the class? We can answer those right now.
I don't think I have anything at the moment.
Okay. Anybody else seem, feel good about everything about the class and the exam?
Oh, I have a, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So you said that. He was gonna open the exam this weekend?
He said he was opening it. I'm not sure why it's not open now, but I asked him to tell me when he was going to open it. He said he will. Kind of hoping for a specific day to be quite honest, but I'm sure he's going to open it this weekend. From what I could tell from the due dates, it looks like this weekend. I would. I would email him. I would personally email him when the first exam is going to be open and due. I would directly ask him that and then I would expect it this weekend based on the due dates given.
You, you think he's going to open it and it's.
I believe he's going to. He acted like he was going to open it.
Be due this weekend.
Yeah. I don't know why he didn't send a notification out to prepare you all, but. I did ask him about it and I provided, I hope the study session makes up for that. I'm really sorry about that. About the sudden nature of this exam. I'm a little confused. We didn't do this last semester. But anyway, yeah, best be prepared for it to be open this weekend. I would ask him first, but yeah. Just in case, this study session should be enough to help you all prepare for the exam. And also go through the quizzes. I highly recommend it. A big thing about this exam is that a lot of the quiz questions are reused, like straight up reused. And you will do a lot better in the exam if you study those questions and memorize them in fact. So any other questions?
I have a question that doesn't really. Relate to the test at all, but it's about. The whole subnetting quiz. I don't know if you want me to ask that later.
You can go ahead right now. It's fine.
So does the PowerPoint? Go over, I actually have to look at the name, but I think it's called like calculating the mask. Because there are. Some practice quizzes that didn't even know how to do. It, it gives you the hosts, the subnets, the IP, and then. It asks, asks like, what mask would maximize the number of subnets?
So the PowerPoint you want to look at is my solving submitting problems PowerPoint. That is a no credit subnetting module. That PowerPoint contains those answers.
Okay, alright, I'll check that out then.
Yeah. Cunningham originally just provided those answers in a lecture, a very long lecture. That is probably the most difficult, one of the most difficult concepts in this class. I've had so many students struggle with that. But the PowerPoint in my video should be able to provide enough help to get you through those questions.
Alright, awesome.
So any other questions? Okay. Do you all, let me ask you all, how good do you feel on GNS, like the commands and stuff? Do you feel like if you. Studied the command guides and maybe did a little GNS practice, you'll be fine for the GNS exam. I can tell you that the exam is pretty similar to like lab three, but you'll just need to add a banner and tell that and stuff like that. I guess I'll take that as a yes.
We had a, it cut out for a solid, I don't know how long, fifteen, ten seconds. I don't know how long, fifteen, ten seconds.
Oh, sorry.
No, you're all good.
So do you all feel good with the GNS stuff? There is time if you want that I can sign into my lab. I can share my screen, maybe go over some stuff perhaps.
Personally, I feel good with the labs, uh, just like reviewing them and going over the command guide.
Yeah, I think everybody else will too. It seems like everybody's doing really well. Um, it's not too complicated. It's like the GNS exam won't be too complicated. As long as you follow the command guides, I mean, you're not timed on it, by the way. You have all day that is open. However, along it's open, you have that much time to get through it. There's no time. It's open book. So you should be good on it as long as you use my command guides. A tip. If you want to do this is. You can, I made them Word documents, so you can actually change them. So basically, you can um, basically combine them, like you could open one of them and copy and paste all the other. Command guys together, one document for you yourself, remove whatever commands you already know. Um, and stuff like that. You can do that. I will give one other hint for the exam. Um, so there is this uh, one command that was not covered in our modules. But was covered in one of Cunningham's lectures that you will be quizzed on. It's not a, it's a very easy question, honestly. It's a little obvious. But there is a specific command that you've not been tested on yet. That you'll need to answer, but it's pretty.
Uh, sorry, you you got out for a moment there. Uh, did you say that it's only, we can only find it in Cunningham's lectures? Or is it in like the command guide at all or?
It's not in any of my command guides actually, because it's not testing any labs. It isn't one of his lectures. I don't remember which one, but it the question is pretty obvious. The way it's worded makes it kind of obvious, especially if you already know the other commands well enough. Should be a pretty easy answer to que- or question to answer, but um. It should be one of his smaller ones, I think. But yeah.
And you said uh, you don't know which specific video or is that for us to find out or?
Um, it probably is between module two and three.
Okay.
Actually, it might be module four. Um, I I'm really sorry. I don't know. Let me look actually. Let me take a look at Canvas. So um, let me ask you all, how are you doing in the class overall? Do you feel that you're doing well? That you understand the material?
Uh, personally, I mean, there's, there are moments where I have no clue what's happening. But uh, I usually catch back up. So yeah, I think I'm doing good.
Okay, is there any concepts you want me to go over right now? This would be actually be a good time. I have quite a be, quite a bit of time left in my office hours, so. This would actually be a pretty good time to um. Discuss and go over any concepts anybody's struggling with. Does, did we break up?
I think possibly. The last thing I heard is uh. You said that uh, if we have any other questions, since there's a lot of time left.
Yeah, like if there's any concepts you're on, you're having trouble understanding, like. If you're having trouble understanding um, like broadcast domains and stuff like that. This would actually be a really good time to go over stuff like that.
I currently have my screen split. Uh, I'm trying to understand the whole uh, calculating the mask. Uh, and I'm I'm looking at the PowerPoint from the. Extra uh. Module. Uh, that that was the only quiz I personally couldn't complete uh, the extra credit one. Uh, or not extra credit, the the practice ones. I couldn't complete uh, the one where it's calculating the masks, because again, I have no clue where to start with that.
Um, let me show the screen perhaps and um. Maybe we, I could help out with that.
Sorry, what'd you say?
Uh, let me, let me um, change my screen share and then maybe I can go over that. I'm gonna look up the PowerPoint. So um, do you see the screen now?
Yes, I do.
So let's go over that together. I think that'd be a good thing to do. So uh, let me ask you all another question. How is my performance been? Is TA? Am I doing everything I need you all to, you need me all to do? Is there anything I can do better?
I uh, I mean, no disrespect to Dr. Rana, but um. I think that if you were not here, I would not be passing this class. Um, I I don't know. I I also um. Uh, nevermind, nevermind. But yeah, it you've you've been a huge, huge help. Uh, I, again, I I don't know if I'd be really passing this class without you.
I do appreciate.
Lots of clarity.
I do appreciate that. Um. Is Ron, what's, is Ron's lectures not helping you? Or his lectures not helping you?
I uh, you cut a little bit, but I think I understand what you're saying. Um. So I I go to the classes. I've missed like one or two, but um. Again, I I mean no disrespect to him, but I feel like I could just read the lectures on my own. Or watch the videos online um, and succeed the same amount or even more. Um. Uh, so I mean, I don't know. Personally, I just. I'm not getting a lot out of the in-person classes.
Wow. Don't you do any of the the GH labs or anything there?
Uh, no, 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 no. Uh, no. All all we do is we just um, he lectures the PowerPoints. Um. And that's it.
Hmm. Well, I guess that is one reason I I am here, so I bet I try to provide a more practical aspect of the stuff. So he does read the the material and then I um, basically provide a more accurate and more lab focused point. Or I probably tried to present the topics that are more focused on the lab. Um. Hmm, I have heard that before and um. I don't mean any disrespect to him either. It seems, he seems to me very understanding and stuff, but yeah. Uh, maybe you should recommend to him, provide a more practical aspect to his lectures. I would probably recommend you do that. You can probably tell him. I would say respectfully, but ask him if he can provide more practical um, examples in his lectures.
Yeah, um, also, I I could be wrong by this, but I kind of feel like the labs reflect. The modules that we're covering and a lot of information in them. Uh. So to uh, like. Uh, make the labs more clear, also makes a lot of clarity in the modules and the other things that we're learning. Uh, so it it all, it helps all around the things that you're doing.
Oh, good. I will say, I probably, you've probably heard me say this before, but yeah, the labs are not designed by Rana. They were designed by Professor Cunningham. He was the original teacher of this class. And yeah, he was strict. Um, this semester, unfortunately, I've not gotten around to it. I will actually be redoing one of the labs entirely.
Did you say uh, just one of them or all of them?
One lab. I will be redoing one lab entirely. It is um, what is it called? Um, STP. That it, that is low, there has never been a lab that students have struggled on more than that one. And even I struggled with it. It's just very unclear. There's no lab document with it. And I'm going to change all of that. I'm redesigning the entire assignment. So basically, instead of downloading the topology, I'll probably just have you all build it maybe. Um, but I will probably reduce the number of steps you need to do. And I might provide some questions for it. There's actually no questions or reflection, but I think those are important. I mean, one thing that's important about the reflections is you can talk about what you're struggling with. And I do provide my feedback. If you want to talk about topics you're struggling with, I'm here for you. Man, the reflection gives me an opportunity to see what students are struggling with and what they're not. So I'm probably going to redo it, make it more like the other ones, but make it clear. I won't provide very difficult questions. I could tell you that. You want to do a very long paragraph.
Awesome, cuz uh. Yeah, I have a tendency to, and I remember during uh, one of the office hours, you showed me a small bit of your. Work and I, I know that. Okay, uh, with the calculating the the mask though. Is that? My, I think I might be. Is, what page is that one on that you're looking at currently?
Page nine.
Okay.
So page nine to twelve, I believe, cover this topic. So um, let's go over it together. I can probably full screen it. So let's zoom in a little bit. So. So um. One, see one, two, three, four. So there's four page, technically five pages. So basically, when you're calculating the cider masks. Um, there's three steps you need to keep in mind. You need to examine the values you are given. You need to calculate the required subnet host bits for each value. And then calculate the subset mask insider. Basically, I do put two, but you're actually supposed to do one. Um, but anyway, basically, there's gonna be problems in this course where you're, you'll be providing IP address. And need something that hosts for a network. You'll be expected to either um, for find a mask that. That covers basically the maximum number of subsets or maximum number of hosts. So basically. To maximize, the basic, what you're doing here is finding a mask that, finding a mask that provides the mask and maximum number of hosts. And therefore supports the sup- provides a minimum number of, it's basically supports the min- minimum number of hosts. Um, I'm sorry, that was unclear. So um, basically what you're, when you're asked to give the maximum number of something, you want to find the minimum of the other. So basically, you want to find the mask that basically just barely supports the uh, other thing. So basically, in other words, you need to find the one southern mask that.
When you say just barely support, oh, sorry.
So um, then I'm, I apologize. I rephrased it better here.
Okay.
So you need to find the one subnet mask that will provide the maximum number of subsets. Well, still supporting the required, or in other words, minimum number of hosts and vice versa. So um, any questions so far on this?
I, I'm sorry.
So I would just like to chime in and say that I don't um. I don't normally watch a lot of the videos for this class, but for this week with the uh, the mask stuff. Those, the the videos about this actually really helped.
Thank you, Danyo. I'm glad it did. I actually made this video, that video last semester. It's really, I didn't change it. I've been changing most of my videos from last semester, but that one I kept. Because it was, it helped out a lot of students. But anyway, let's go over um. Let's go over our example together. So we're, so this is a little different from the practice questions. We're gonna be finding two masks. Basically, we're by finding the mask that gives the maximum subnet. And then the mask that gives the maximum host bits for the, we're gonna, we're given the following requirements. So we're given this address range. We're given the subsets and we're giving the hosts. So basically, those are the needed hosts and the needed subsets. So Blade, what I believe when you go to the question, it asks for the maximum, right? Is that correct?
Um. I think so, yeah. I I believe it was asking for the maximum.
Okay. If somebody would like to check, I'd appreciate that. Like um, go to the, it's a practice quiz. It doesn't matter what grade you get on it. But if you could go ahead and check that practice quiz and let me know what it says.
I am checking that as we speak right now.
Okay.
Alright, it says uh, yeah, what mask would maximize the number of subsets? Uh, it looks like, yeah, all we say maximize.
That's good. So when you hear maximize subnet, you need to take a look at the hosts. Basically, you're basically solving for a mask that provides the minimum number of hosts when you ask the, ask the maximize subnet. Basically, the logic is um, when you have a, basically a subnet mask, if you remember. Controls how many host bits and how many subnet bits are used, if you remember from um, your studies in subnetting. So basically, we're, when you change, when you use different masks, it changes the number of host bits and subnet bits. So basically, when you ask the maximize subnet bits or maximize subsets. You want the, you want the mask that has the lowest number of subnet or host bits. In other words, you're maximizing the number of subnet bits you can use in your subnet, if that makes sense. And in order to do that, you need to find the number of host bits that supports the number of hosts needed. So um, I'll read this little paragraph here. For problems like this, you'll be asked to find a mask, mask that would maximize the number of subsets. Or maximize number of hosts. If you need to maximize subsets. You need to find the required or minimum number of host bits using the number of needed hosts in the example. And that's vice versa for the other way around. For maximizing posts, you need to find the minimum number of submit bits you need. So let's start doing some calculations here. So for maximizing subnet bits, you need to find the needed host bits, the needed num- the required number of host bits. The formula you use is this, so two H minus two, where H equals host bits. So basically, um, you need to memorize powers of two for this. So basically, your equation right there. You take the number of hosts you're given. So from up here, it says six hosts. And we're maximizing subsets. So hosts equals six, basically. And you need to find the number here with this equation here. You need to find the power of two that'll either equal six or exceed it. Does that make sense so far?
Um, kind of. I'm just gonna stick with you.
Okay, let me, I'll I'll go through it again. So basically, when you asked when a question to maximize the number of subset bis- bits. You use the following equation. You're thinking hosts. When you see maximize subset, think hosts. You're calculating with the host. So um, hosts right here equals six hosts. Because it's the needed host. So basically, in this equation, I should put needed hosts, but basically. Needed host equals whatever number you're given here. So that would be six in this equation for this example. And then you use the following formula. The power of H equals a power of two. Basically, you're trying to find, you're trying to make this equation here either equal or exceed um, the number of needed hosts. But you want to be the lowest number possible that will do that. So an example, in this example, we need six hosts. So this is our equation. So uh, six is either less than or greater, or either either equal to, equal to or less than two to the power of H minus two. So we can pick the power of the, we can, we can pick three, two to the power of three. That equals eight minus two equals six. Where three is the number of required host bits. So three becomes our answer here. So on, does that make sense?
Uh, yes, yes, that does. Um, I think that just repetition and practice is gonna help with it now. Um, how would I answer that? Like, how would I put that answer in there like? Uh, cuz it it it's, at the end, it's asking what mask would maximize the number of subnets. So would I say three or three subsets?
Um, so basically, that's the next step. So we're getting to that. So that's this here.
Okay.
But we're gonna get to that in a little while. So for maximizing host bits, you need to find the required subnet bits. The formula is simpler. It's just the power of two that either equals or exceeds the needed number of subsets. So it's very simple. So in the example, we need fifteen subsets to the power four equals sixteen. And that would be our answer because six to the power of four or sixteen is the lowest number that meets the required number of subnet bits. So basically. We're not concerned with this equation. All we're really concerned about is this H and S, the powers of. That's basically the answer you're gonna carry over to solve the, finally solve the problem and figure out what mask you need. So basically, you use this equation to figure out what number you need. Or what number of host bits you need and what number of subnet bits you need. That's what this power of, power of two is. So the equation is basically to make sure it needs a required. So the equation is basically to make sure it meets the requirements without being too big or too little. And then you go to step three. Now for your questions, you need to write them as sider notation. I think Rana has said otherwise before, but you need to include the slash. That's the way the quest, at least the last time I've heard, that that's how the questions are configured. That's how Cunningham configure them. So make sure you put the little slash at the beginning of your answer. So the, so to find the subnet mask that provides a mask, maximum subsets, you use another formula. So you take third, the number thirty-two and you subtract H, H being the power of two, we figured out here. So for our equation here, um, H was three, so thirty-two minus three equals twenty-nine. And therefore answer is slash twenty-nine. Now find maximize, finding the mask that maximizes host is a little more complicated. So we have to use the, have to use this formula N plus S or N, excuse me, N equals network bits. Excuse me, and S equals required subnet bit. So to do that, you need to look at the IP address you're given. So N is a number of network bits. Network bits are always constant based on the class that the address resides in. So this is a class C address and therefore the network bits are twenty-four. So, um, here's the, um, class, classes right here. So class A equals eight network bits. Class B equals sixteen and class C equals twenty-four, which is our answer for here. So after you figure out the network bits, we need to apply, plug in the value of S. And, um, add those two numbers together and we get your answer slash twenty-eight. So, um, to review, examine what the question is asking for. If it's asking for, or if it asks maximize subsets, um, work with the host bits. If it's asking to maximize host bits or hosts, max or work with the subsets. Um, then you use the following formula that matches the, um, requirement you're given. So if you're maximizing some that's used to the power H minus two, find the power of, you take that, carry over that power of two. And then you subtract it from thirty-two. If you're maximizing host bits, find the power of two that you need, take that S, add it to the number of network bits in the IP address and then that's your subnet or your subset mask.
So I guess it's that part that, uh, I'm slightly lost on. Uh, I don't know if there's other people that have questions, but, um, right now, but, uh, yeah. Uh, so, so like with the class C, class B and class A, uh, how do you discern that?
So there was a specific range of addresses. Unfortunately I didn't include them in this PowerPoint. I should have. But, um, in other PowerPoints, or let me think, um, you can actually look it up on the internet. So you could look class address ranges on Google. And it's, or class IP address ranges on Google and you should be able to find them. So basically there's a very specific, um, there's very specific, specific ranges. Um, for each class and basically you just memorize what, um, class that IP ad, you just memorize the class range. And then you can figure out which range your IP ad, given IP address fits. I don't know if the textbook shared that this week, but it should have. Um, is there anything else that I can answer concerning the mask of the some that's in hopes questions?
Uh, for me, I think I'm good. I think I just need to try some now.
I recommend practicing a lot. It takes a lot of practice. I probably went through this quiz well over fifty times during my time in the class. Um, here is a chart for powers of two. Um, for easy reference, um, basically when you take exams that require subnetting, here's my tip. Basically you want to memorize a bunch of numbers. You want to memorize the powers of two and you want to be able to write them down. You'll be given a notepad and pen, so you can write them all down, like the powers of two. You need to write down the class address ranges. Um, you can also write down the, um, magic number stuff too. I provide a table in, um, this, in this PowerPoint right here, this table right here, you basically want to write down. Let me see, there's another table. No, it's just this one. This table here, you basically want to write down the DDN and the cider mask that match at DDN. And then you want to write them out, down the magic numbers that match it. When you do the exams. So is there anything else I could help you all with?
I'm all good personally.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you all participated. I can't tell you how much I'm really thankful that you did. Thank you so much. It was a fun time talking with you all and teaching you all. Um, I hope you're enjoying this course, this course and I'm glad, um, my work has been helping you all. I can't tell you I'm thankful and I can help you all and you all are actually benefiting from my work. But, um, if there's any other questions you have about the exam, um, you can share them right now. But, um, or anything in general, is there anything else I can help you out with?
I am all good. So I think I'm gonna leave now, uh, but, uh, thank you for everything today.
You're very welcome, sir. Thank you for participating.
Yeah, all right, bye-bye.
Thank you and you have a good day, Ben. How about you two? Is there anything else I could do for you all? Hey Danielle, can you hear me?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. I can hear you. Is there anything else I could do for you?
Uh, yes, I have a quick question. Uh, when is the, is first is due? Like, I don't see on Canvas right now.
Um, well, that's the thing. I think it's gonna be this weekend. Rana hasn't really told me. I'm not really sure why, but it's marked in Canvas as week five. So I would, I would, my recommend date, the reason I'm giving it now is because I think it's opening this weekend. From what I can tell from the dates, I would prepare for it this weekend.
Oh, okay. And does he's going to give us like few days or he's just going to close in one day's?
Um, I don't know. I would, I, I would highly recommend you ask him. He hasn't really told me. So I would rec, I highly recommend you, I directly email him today and ask him when he's opening the exam.
Oh, okay.
You really want to, uh, know when?
Uh, and you can also ask stuff like how many days do you have to take it? I would, I would ask him stuff like that.
Stuff like that. Oh, okay. And is it going to in like lockdown browser or just regular?
Yes, sir. It's lockdown browser.
Lockdown. Oh, okay. That's what I thought.
Did you participate in the study session? I just wanted to know if you just came in here.
Yeah, no, I just came here. I usually watch your video and also Scott, uh, video. So I think I should be fine, I guess. We are going to, yeah.
Um, nation is to watch over, you don't have to watch over all of it. I would watch, I'm actually recording this session. I've already recorded it. It's for everybody else's reference. Also the study PowerPoint.
Um, I, I would say, um, um, as long as you stay.
Oh, okay. Oh, that would be great.
But my PowerPoint has a lot of tips that can help you out for the exam.
Oh, okay. Yes, I definitely then look.
Okay.
Yep.
So is there anything else I can help you with, sir?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Good luck on the exam, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Bye-bye.
Bye. Have a good day.
You too. Okay, Danielle, is there anything I can do for you?
Oh, no, I just got back. There's a, a storm knocked down a tree in my backyard last night. I just went to look at that.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, it's pretty cool. Seems like a good photo opportunity. Like I could try to climb into it and try to make it seem like I climbed all the way up this big tree.
So the power, the power didn't.
I did it. I like, um.
The power? I just, you're sorry, you cut out.
I'm sorry.
Oh, you can stop the recording now, I think.
Okay.